I am here to personally support Bill 296. And as the Chief Human Resource Officer of Florida Blue, we at Florida Blue fully support Bill 296. Consistent with our values, we believe it's very important that individuals have equal rights of employment, housing, and public accommodations. This is about establishing a business climate in Jacksonville that is based on fairness and advances economic development. This is about having an ability to attract and retain the best and the brightest talents and businesses to our city. You have heard from several of our employees tonight who shared that through establishing a positive and inclusive business climate, that we are not only able to retain them, but we are able to demonstrate how they can bring their whole vitality to the workforce. And just think about the power of that, that it can have in our city. Most importantly, this is about treating all individuals with respect and dignity. At Florida Blue, we are very optimistic about the future of Jacksonville. We believe this bill contains the fundamental elements required to help achieve a great future for our city. We respectfully request that the City Council fully support this bill. Thank you.
And I'm honored to get to speak to all of you this evening. I serve as the senior ally of congregation of Hesse, the temple, Jacksonville's oldest and largest Jewish congregation. As such, when we hear issues of faith debated in the public square, I think it's important to go directly to the source. And as people of faith, many of us look to the Bible for guidance in our lives. And so, we have to take at face value the text that is presented to us. And while many would choose to cite Leviticus 18:22, suggesting that a man must not lie with another man the way one lies with a woman, we have to realize that in the Hebrew original text, this is described as a toivah, as opposed to a chet. A toivah is an abomination, as opposed to chet, a general sin or crime or transgression of some kind. And so, we have to ask, what are the other toivot? And so, to any of you who has had a ham sandwich recently, I say to you that you should realize that these are the same category of offense in the eyes of God. And so, I wouldn't pick Leviticus 18:22 as the verse that guides those of us who are people of faith on this issue. I would choose rather the very next chapter of the Torah, Leviticus Chapter 19, Verse 17. It says, "Reprove your neighbor, but come to no guilt on his or her account." And we, as a community, are guilty, for we stand in opposition to fairness and justice for all of our neighbors. It is no accident that the very next verse in the Torah, Leviticus 19, Verse 18, is the famous "Love thy neighbor as thyself." These are connected ideas. We must treat our neighbors with fairness, and we must love all of our neighbors as ourselves. In my opinion, my humble opinion before all of you esteemed council members this evening, is that this is not an issue of religion, this is not an issue of same-sex marriage, this is not even an issue as to whether it is right or wrong to be a homosexual, this is an issue of justice and fairness for all the citizens of our community. And I urge you to vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
I come to you today as a businessman, an executive chairman of a cost-effective marketing and global largest privately-held companies in Jacksonville. I'm here to speak in favor of the Human Rights Ordinance 296. You've heard a lot tonight, so I'll try not to repeat a lot that's been said already. I'd like to read, however, the preamble to the Florida Constitution. The preamble reads as follows, "We, the people of the state of Florida, being grateful to Almighty God for our constitutional liberty, in order to secure its benefits, perfect our government, ensure domestic tranquility, maintain public order, and guarantee equal civil and political rights to all." I'll restate that. "And guarantee equal civil and political rights to all," do ordain and establish this constitution. Spelling out gender identity and sexual orientation, as has 66th and 70th largest cities in the United States, as has most of the largest cities in the state of Florida, speaks loudly to employers, it speaks loudly to employees and prospective employees, and it communicates to everyone involved that Jacksonville does not discriminate against anyone, that Jacksonville offers protection in employment, housing, and public accommodations for all its citizens. Being on the right side of this boat is very important for our city. Our city is a bold city, one that we want to be proud of, one where discrimination is not allowed. There's been too much of that in the past. And public opinion is clearly on our side. Eighty-six percent of Fortune 500 companies protect sexual orientation and gender identity, eighty-nine percent of U.S. residents do, and eighty-six percent of Jacksonville residents do. It's the right thing to do, it's fair to pass this law and this ordinance, and I ask City Council to vote yes. Thank you.
Not as an official representative of the Human Rights Commission, but as a person who has served this city for the past six years, and also as a community leader whose agency serves the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender communities, and particularly our community's most vulnerable members, our young people. Our LGBT, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender young people are frequently discriminated against in public places like the buses and the libraries, and in entry-level employment, and in their housing situations. I've seen this for years. So, because I know this firsthand, I joined my fellow commissioners in 2007 when we began looking at the need to stop, when we began looking at the issue of discrimination towards the LGBT community. And this was following the study that JCCI did that reviewed the status and impact of the LGBT community in our city. Mayor Payton advised us to do some local research to inform community discussions. So, we asked the University of North Florida to conduct an attitude survey in the fall of 2008, and that survey showed that eighty-six percent of those who surveyed support equal treatment and employment for gay and lesbian people. That same year, we conducted surveys and focus groups through Jacksonville Community Council, JCCI, to ascertain whether this discrimination against LGBT people exists in Jacksonville, and we found that forty-one percent of the LGBT respondents reported discrimination in the last five years. The most frequent incidence of discrimination occurred in employment. These two studies are available through the Human Rights Commission. So, these numbers confirm for us that the need exists to amend the city ordinances and that there is a broad-based support for amending these ordinances. Last November, after several years of thoughtful consideration, the Human Rights Commission unanimously approved a resolution in support of amending the ordinances in the city to include sexual orientation and gender identity as protected classes in the Human Rights So, I stand before you to say, support this bill. It's an idea whose time has come, and it's evidenced by the overwhelming support that we've heard tonight, and support in the business community and the community at large. Thank you.
I'm in support of the bill. My story's a little different, so I'm hoping, I think this will wake people up a little bit. Mine's a cautionary tale. I retired thirty-five years of teaching this last February. Before February, had I had this opportunity to speak, I would have said no, I would have declined. I would have been too fearful that it would have jeopardized my position, which I will add, I've loved, loved, loved working in public education. My story, absent my fear, was rooted in something that happened earlier in my career. I was married, two children, and I was married to a very abusive man. My children and I had to leave in the middle of the night when things became violent. From that point on, my goal was two things. One, to provide a house for my, a home for my children to transition them, and where they would be safe, and they would feel love and peace. The other one was that I could still go to school, the high school I taught, and be an effective teacher, to put my personal woes aside. During this time, something was happening at the school that I was unaware of. And it is a rumor, and you know how rumors go. One person tells this rumor to somebody, and then it grows, and it grows. Couple of faculty people talking in the faculty lounge, and then it grew. And then it went on to the administration, it went to the PTA, it went to my church, it went to my children's daycare, it went to my husband. What was going on? What was all this rumor? So, I didn't find out until it really had gotten out of hand, when my minister came to my school, pulled me out of my classroom, talked with me in the hall, and said, "You are about to lose your job. You are about to lose your church, and worse of all, you are about to lose your children because there has been charges pressed against you, but you are unfit." "Why?" I asked. "Well, because you're a lesbian," he said. "I am? I am?" I didn't know that. I didn't identify as a lesbian. I had no lesbian relationships, I had no attractions to any women. What was this based on? It was based on my gender expression. It was based on this deep, God-given contralto voice that I have always had. It was based on my walk, my talk, the way I stood, my style of dress, I know good shoes. It was based on that, and for that reason, I almost lost what I loved most in this world. I appreciate this bill that's come in front of you, and I do hope you consider my tale when you make your decision. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President Jost, Councilman Jones, and all the rest of the distinguished members of the Jacksonville City Council. I rise this evening to speak on behalf and in support of 2012-296, and urge each of you to vote in favor of it when it comes before you. There's lots of things I'd like to tell you about myself, but I have limited time, and as such, I'll tell you that while this is a part of who I am, it's not the complete picture. I stand before you today as the proud father of two wonderful children, and I also stand before you as a proud gay man living in Jacksonville, Florida. I'm also the executive director of Oasis, the LGBT center in Northeast Florida, a nonprofit organization here in Jacksonville, and I also serve as the Florida State Treasurer of AT&amp;T's GLBT affinity group known as The League, who is my employer. I moved to Jacksonville in 1992, and at the time, I was employed by Jacksonville's largest employer, the United States Navy, as a chaplain. And it was a position I held for eight years. While serving our country as a Navy chaplain, I not only lived under the "Don't Ask, Don't Tell" rule, knowing that I could never reavail my sexual identity without being dismissed, I also counseled hundreds of sailors who dealt with the same situation and the associated fears. Thankfully, the federal government has removed those fears, and our military servicemen and women serve today and no longer have that fear of reprisal of losing their job based on their sexual orientation. As the largest employer in Duval County, the Navy brings in over thirteen billion dollars to our local economy annually. Sailors no longer have to live in fear of losing their jobs because of their sexual orientation. However, because base housing is limited both at Naval Station Mayport and at Naval Air Station Jacksonville, most sailors live off-base. Our GLBT Navy personnel living in Jacksonville still have to deal with the fear of their sexual orientation with reprisal with respect to landlords or businesses who may not agree with their sexual orientation, precisely because Jacksonville does not have a 296 in place at this point, and it should as a matter of fairness. Jacksonville is also the second-largest military retirement community on the East Coast, just under Norfolk, Virginia. Many who have served here in the past want to come back to our community, and they've brained with them significant retirement dollars and incomes that help our local economy. I'd like to see the City Council send a message to not only the members of the GLBT community who bravely serve our country currently, but to those who want to retire here. Please, come back. We like the Navy, value you, we want you in Jacksonville. Thank you.
I'm very pleased to be here tonight. I am a relatively new member of the Jacksonville community. I'm sure my thunder has already been stolen. I was here to talk about the law, and clearly, that's already been expressed very clearly by some others. My background, and I'll tell you about that, my background and experience with human rights, and especially when it comes to sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression. I am retired, but I was a human resource professional for twenty-six years. My employer had fifteen thousand employees in thirty states, about two thousand of those employees were in the state of Florida, and I was the head of human resources overseeing those fifteen thousand employees. So, I had to be fairly knowledgeable about my employment law, both at the federal and state level. But what was interesting to me is when I was early on in my career with this employer, I was given the responsibility to provide a stable, top-notch workforce so that we could continue to be the leader in our industry. And one of the things I asked leadership for at that time was the opportunity to add sexual orientation to our nondiscrimination policy. And they said, "Okay, go ahead and do that." And I did, and as a result, and that was 1992, by the way, that was twenty years ago. And at the time we implemented it, we didn't have the language of gender identity and expression, but the way we interpreted sexual orientation in our policy was inclusive of that. And I'm here to tell you, in those years following the implementation of that policy, we had no floor show. There was nothing that happened that made us think, "Oh, my gosh, what have we done?" Instead, we ended up with a stable and appreciative workforce who felt that we had provided a safe, affirming environment for them, so that they could feel when they came to work, they knew they would not be discriminated against, they could be treated fairly and with dignity and respect. We've been here in Jacksonville, like I said, since August, we moved into Riverside. It's a very diverse community. We appreciate the diversity of the area, and we hope that you will vote in favor of 296, both for the business community and for my diverse neighbors. Thank you.
I am active in the LGBT community, and I am a professor of mental health counseling at the University of North Florida. I am, I pure to urge you to vote in favor of 296 for the health, for the mental health and well-being of not only our LGBT community, but for our Jacksonville community. I think it was said earlier that if part of our community is disenfranchised, our entire community suffers. A whole segment of our community, the LGBT community, lives with the threat of being terminated from employment, being denied housing opportunities, and being unwelcome or refused service in public places solely based on their sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression. That threat is usually accompanied by increased stress that in turn compromises the ability to function at one's optimum. I recently conducted a research study that looked solely at African-American gay men. And what I found was that, I, we already knew that people in the earlier stages of their gay identity development experienced extreme amounts of stress, or fear of discrimination, or fear of violence, or fear of losing their family, their churches. But what we didn't know, what we discovered in this study, which by the way, took place here in Jacksonville, it had participants from all around the country, but the majority of participants were African-American gay men in the South and primarily in Jacksonville. And what we discovered in that study was that even as these African-American gay men developed a more positive gay identity, meaning that they were moving through the process and coming out, that they were experiencing increased amounts of stress. And that sounds counterintuitive, however, with the realization that they now belong to a marginalized social identity group became a reality, stress levels increased. And again, I'll say, when one, that segment of our community is disenfranchised, our entire community suffers. I believe that we all want to contribute and make contributions to this community. We wouldn't be here if we didn't. We want to make it safer for all of us, for those who have chosen to live here, and those who make it, and to make it an attractive place, a destination for individuals, families, and businesses that want to call Jacksonville home. The city's website describes Jacksonville as rapidly growing with a high quality of life and a business-friendly government. Passing this Human Rights Ordinance will allow us to live up to the city that is described in writing, and will enable us to say that this is truly a better Jacksonville. Thank you.
Mr. President and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking in support of the Human Rights Ordinance 2012-296 that is before you. I served our country for twenty years in the United States Navy. I defended the rights of all people to be treated with justice and allowed people to live and work in our society without fear of discrimination. Today, I serve as pastor of St. John's Lutheran Church, a member congregation of the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America. I still serve as a defender of the rights of all God's creation, and especially called to stand with those who are considered to be on the margins of our society, those who for whatever reasons that are discriminated against and thought less of, those who are disowned by their families, separated from their children, fired from their jobs, evicted from their apartments and neighborhoods, and insulted by public figures, denounced from the pulpit, vilified on religious radio and TV, and then beaten in the schools and killed on the streets and the backwoods of our nation. In this case, I stand with the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community to ensure safety and fairness in jobs, housing, and the basic needs supported to most citizens. In our Christian scripture, the question is asked, "What does the Lord require of us?" And the answer is, "To do justice, and to love kindness, and to walk humbly with our God." Passing this change to the Human Rights Ordinance will send a clear message to Jacksonville, excuse me, a clear message that Jacksonville is an all-inclusive city built on equality, justice, and kindness. And I ask that you would help to provide a safe environment for our sisters and brothers by voting yes. Thank you.
I am here to urge you to support the passage of Bill 296. I believe this bill is needed for protection for discrimination in employment, housing, and public access, our public accommodations here in Jacksonville. I'm an attorney who's been licensed for the past twenty years in California, and swore when I moved there that I would never live back in the Southeast. But I did move back ten years ago to help care for my elderly parents. I've been fortunate in the past ten years to not experience any employment discrimination. I've served on a church board locally, and I manage litigation for three of the largest banks in Jacksonville, and different types of litigation. I was afraid of moving back to Florida to take the Florida bar exam, because I have, knowing the legal profession is quite conservative at times, I didn't want to deal with discrimination in private practice, so I've chosen to work in corporations that have policies prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. However, there's no such protection outside of the birthplace. I have friends who've been thrown out of restaurants along with their families when they were celebrating birthdays, just because two men in the party happened to hold hands. I have friends who were denied access to restaurants here in Jacksonville because they were perceived to be gay and lesbian. I have ten friends who graduated from universities here with bachelor's degrees and graduate degrees, who moved to other cities within a year of graduation because they wanted to live in cities that provided the types of protection that we're discussing here. I've personally been harassed by police officers just because I was seen leaving establishments that were frequented by lesbian and gay people. There are no protections here currently against anti-gay discrimination or gender identity discrimination. If ever faced with the choice of whether to relocate my team of paralegals to another city, I would have to seriously consider relocating that team to a city that did provide such protection. Lesbian and gay people are just afraid to live here. Once they move away after they graduate from college, they don't move back. Please support this bill by offering these protections to our local citizens. It is good for jobs in Jacksonville, it is what is right, this legislation is about equality and justice for all, and let's make Jacksonville a place where people and companies live and stay to pursue opportunities and to prosper. Thank you for listening.
I'm speaking tonight in support of Amendment 2012-296 for Jacksonville's Human Rights Ordinance, to add protection which are already in place for race, color, religious sex, national origin, age, disability, marital, familial status, to apply also for sexual orientation as well as gender identity or expression. As you know from past testimony, this evening, we have a number of large, medium-sized employers in Jacksonville that have expressed the need and their support of this measure. In fact, recently, there was a statement printed in the Times Union where many of these same leaders and others signed a statement urging their support of this amendment. So, rather than repeat a lot of what's been said, I'm just going to add my voice and my belief, where I believe every day that Jacksonville doesn't have such a policy in place, is adding to, is making it more difficult as employers continue to look at us as a sports pension or as a new home. It's going to become more and more and more important as a factor to them and the inclusiveness of their employees' workforce. So, I urge you to support this amendment. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the council today for allowing me to speak. I am here in support of Bill Number 2012-296. The Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, or the DSM, published by the American Psychiatric Association, provides a common language and standard criteria for the classification of mental disorders. It is used in the United States and around the world. Homosexuality was taken out of this manual back in 1973. Being gay was and is considered normal. Since a gay person is normal, we are also human beings, and because we are human beings, we have rights. Because all human beings have rights, governments are bound to protect them. It is a violation of human rights when governments declare it illegal to be gay. These are the words of the Secretary of State for the Federal Government, Hillary Rodham Clinton. As a business owner, I left Jacksonville in 2006. The reason why is what I'm seeing here today. I have seen fear, bigotry, hatred, prejudice, and ignorance dictating how to conduct business. These attitudes limit the ability to expand a business or a city. Jacksonville wants to create jobs, wants to grow and increase its revenue, wants to be more competitive in today's global market with projects such as expanding and upgrading the port. All of Florida's major cities are covered by city or county ordinances that include protections based on sexual orientation and gender identity, except Jacksonville. Jacksonville must be progressive in its policies in order to compete. Progress comes from changes in laws, and laws must change before fears about change dissipate. I'm asking the council to pass this bill, which updates the antidiscrimination policies. This update will expand business. It brings Jacksonville aligned with today's competitive markets. And finally, I'd like to point out on a personal note, I am in an interracial relationship. This was once considered illegal too, but because progress did happen, it is not anymore. It is time for progress to happen again in Jacksonville. Thank you.
I am a resident of Jacksonville, Florida now for over three years. I used to work for Striker &amp; Dows Creek, which is a half-a-billion-dollar-a-year medical device company. I was recruited when I was in the top six salespeople throughout the United States in Washington, DC. I relocated to Jacksonville with a startup company, a medical device. I was here six months, and with that company, I took over one of the lowest volume accounts, took it to the third highest-selling account in the U.S. The surgeon approached my boss, said, "We do not want to work with a gay sales rep." My boss called me crying, terminated me on the spot. It was two weeks later, I spoke with my supervisor, and I spoke with our Director of Sales, and I was told why I was fired. At that point, I had a choice. I could have left Jacksonville, I could have went back to DC, I could have went back to Memphis, Tennessee. I chose to stay. I now own two small businesses in the city. I now own two small businesses in the city. As a small business owner, I struggle to pay the bills every day. We need to open up this city. We need to bring in new vitality, retain our youth, keep this city on a progressive note. People fear progression. People fear the word progressive because they think it makes you not conservative. I have my financial responsibilities, which are conservative. We have a lot of Republicans that support this bill. This is a bipartisan bill of 2012-296. This is the right thing for Jacksonville. The eyes of the world are watching Jacksonville now. I fielded offices, I fielded calls into my magazine's office today from New York, from Arizona, from Texas, Mississippi, and Tennessee. We are not doing this just for Jacksonville. The rest of the nation is watching what you, our city council members, are elected to do, and that is to prevent the discrimination in the city of Jacksonville. Thank you.
I have a very distinct memory as a child of being yelled at for drinking out of the colored water fountain instead of the white water fountain. Now, we have a transit center named after that same person who faced with that discrimination said, "No." I'm asking if it's time to say, "No." We don't want an airport named after us. We just want equal protection under the law. Thank you.
...with my wife, two dogs, and three cats. I've written this because I get emotional and forget. I'm a fifty-six-year-old Jacksonville native, and I'm proud to still live in the city where I was born. I have been looked down upon and ignored by my family, my coworkers, my city, my state, and my country. People ask me why I never left my job of thirty-eight years, or city, or state. I give them the same reason that I never left my family. I've always believed that my being who I truly am eventually, hopefully, opened their minds. However, I am reminded at times like this of the reasons that so many of my friends that live in Jacksonville, when there are other cities that are more accepting and inclusive with all citizens, I can understand their decisions. Equal protection for all should mean exactly that, equal. Please do the right thing for all Jacksonville citizens, current and new. It will be a new day in Jacksonville when no one has to feel the need to leave for a better city to come home. I never left because I wanted to be here, but this day happens. Passing this amendment is a huge step towards that getting. Please show me that my city will protect me. As I journey through my life, it has meaning so much to finally feel accepted. Thank you very much for your time.
I am a mother, a grandmother, a friend, and an adopted mother of many people, LGBT community, who have lost their families because of their sexuality. I was...came to Jacksonville when I was seven years old, seventy-two years ago. And I remember going to school and having people stick pins in me because I was Jewish. The blood came, and they just wanted to see who I was and what type of person I was. If you don't think that that didn't leave a mark on me, it did. And so I happened to be the parent of three gay children out of five. And I wanted to be sure that they would never feel what I felt during that time. Unfortunately, they've had to suffer a lot of things. When they went through high school, when they were with some of their other friends, they had to feel that. Why should we feel that we must harm other people and not give them everything because of who they are and who they were born to be? I appreciate your listening, and I hope that you will realize that these are people like everyone else, and honor the parents of these people. That is why I helped to establish people like parents, families, and friends of lesbian, gays, bisexual, transgender. Thank you very much. I am proud to stand here as a Christian heterosexual woman in solidarity with the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, cis, and fellow citizens of this community. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's wrong to discriminate against someone who has something at the core of their being that's different than mine. I did not choose to be a heterosexual. I am a heterosexual. And I submit to each of you, I'm assuming you're heterosexual, maybe some of you aren't, but you didn't choose to be heterosexual. You are heterosexual. And lesbian and gay men and women did not choose to be homosexual. It's the core of their being. Because this is a heteronormative world, they probably have been closeted and didn't come out because of the fears they have, the fears that you can do something about when you vote. Like you could say that we are not going to be a city that does not allow housing, employment, and public accommodation to someone because of their sexual orientation or their gender identity or expression. And I'm here to submit to you as someone who has a degree in Christian education from a small southern college in Montgomery, Alabama, that nowhere in the scriptures will you find that God nor Jesus said anything about, "Don't allow someone to have an opportunity to work or to live in a house or to have a public accommodation because of their sexual orientation or gender identity or expression." You won't find it. It is not there. I'll give you that some of you are talking about scripture that says that this is an abomination to the Lord. That's there. We're not here to debate that. It's not about what your religious beliefs are. It's about the basic human rights of these individual men and women who live here in our community. So I beg you, if you think about tonight, what would Jesus do? The Jesus who I know as a historic figure who lived on this earth and who now lives at the right hand of God the Father would allow every human being that He helped to create the basic rights, the basic rights that were asked you to vote against tonight. So my prayer, my prayer is that you will do just that and not discriminate against these good people who are citizens just like you. And I'm here to say that I would venture that all of you probably know someone and love someone who is a lesbian or a gay or transgender or bisexual person, and you don't know it because they're closeted. So please, vote yes for this ordinance. Thank you.
Some of you know me, and it's nice to see you all tonight and have this opportunity to speak with you as quickly as I can because I know that it has been a long night. It looks like it is a long night yet to go, so I will be as brief as I can. I'm like some of the people who spoke tonight. I'm a native of Jacksonville. I've always lived here. I was planning to live here except for three years, but I spent Tallahassee going to the best, if not the second-best, law school in Florida. I opened the newspaper this morning and looked at the back of the A section, and I saw a big ad there from the Jacksonville Civic Council encouraging support for 2012-296 as I am encouraging support for tonight. According to that, very well put together ad, the heads of $26 billion worth of revenue in our community, annual revenue, support the bill. And I think that that's...that says something. I'm just a simple legal aid lawyer. I don't control $26 billion pennies, let alone $26 billion dollars. So whenever I think about issues like this, I think about them in the context of fairness and in the context of civil rights. One of the reasons I went to law school is because I was young and gay, growing up in Jacksonville, and realizing that opportunities were limited here. My friends, my peers who I grew up with, did not return to Jacksonville after law school like I did. They did not come back to Jacksonville from the colleges they went away to. That is painful. It's painful to me personally. It's painful to our city. It's painful, as someone mentioned earlier, the brain drain that we've experienced here. We read about it in studies from scholars like Dr. Richard Florida, who talks about the creative class and how cities that embrace diversity and at least tolerate it are the cities in our country, that are 21st century cities, that are getting the jobs, that are actually going somewhere. So I think about all those things when I come to work like this. And I'm very honored to be one of the co-chairs of the Jacksonville Committee for Equality, which is the group that kicked this off a couple of years ago and started talking with folks like President or Mayor Delaney and others, and really brought everyone into the work and is partially responsible for why we're all here at this hour on this night. I just want to close by thanking you all for your indulgence. I very much appreciate your time. I know how it is to listen to stories. Sometimes you engage with them, and sometimes you wonder why you're listening at all, but I've been surprised tonight, frankly, that the support for this bill has been so overwhelming. I guess sometimes we don't give our hometown the credit it deserves, but it deserves a great deal of credit, and it would be your credit, each of you, to seriously consider this measure, this ordinance change, and to support 2012-296, and I would thank you for it. Thank you.
And I urge you to pass this bill, 296. I grew up in Jacksonville. I went to school here, and I worked in Jacksonville. I love this city, and I want to raise a family here. Slowly but surely, my friends who could say the same that I just said have moved away and found better jobs and opportunities. And I feel it's time to make Jacksonville a destination on par with other major cities. Seattle, Boston, Miami, Tampa, all have in place what Bill 296 proposes for Jacksonville, and we're just as good as them. Why don't we? I want businesses to view Jacksonville as a city they want to do business in. For that to happen, they have to believe that the talent they need can be found here. As it is, Jacksonville is lacking in its protection for some of its citizens. What talented, educated person wants to move to a city where people are barred, are not barred from discrimination in any form? Your constituents need you to change that. In closing, I want my friends to come back. I want them to come back to raise a family. I want them to come back and go to school here. Lastly, I want them to come back and work in Jacksonville, just as they did before. Passing Bill 296 is a step in that direction. Please vote to pass this bill. Thank you for your time.
And I just moved here in December after a four-year search. I couldn't live anywhere in the country. We actually took four years of our kids' high school and vacationed in every beach town we could find on the East Coast. And someone said, "Hey, check out Jacksonville," and we loved it. People were nice, things were great. And I just want to tell you that I'm really, really surprised that you guys haven't passed this bill earlier. And that would explain why everybody that was from Jacksonville that we met away from here said, "Are you kidding? You're going to move there? I would never go there." It was amazing. So I think that the city can be great. You have the potential to be the next big hottest city in the country. Just economically, it would definitely be the best thing to vote for this bill. So I urge you guys. And also, I wanted to let you know I am a heterosexual black male, and I didn't see too many of those represented tonight. I've been on the slide and table in the past and other boards, and I know sometimes you can think, "Well, nobody's really represented other than the ones that have personal interests." But I guarantee you that that's not the case. There are many folks out there who didn't come tonight that are heterosexual and believe that these folks should have protection under the law. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. President and City Council. I know you are tired because it is late, and so are we. I come here today representing the African-American community. I come here today representing women of this city. I come here today representing the gay Christians, yes, we do exist, in the city of Jacksonville. Tonight is not about a religious fight. I have not come to change your opinion on who I love because that is not to be justified by man. We are here not debating what the Bible says or does not say. It is simply a plea to our city officials who we have elected to take action for equality. We are simply asking that you live out the Constitution and grant justice and equality for all people by passing Bill 296. The GLBT community is made up of people, human beings, and just like the heterosexual community of this community, we deserve the right to be treated fairly and given an equal opportunity to gain employment in order to provide our families with life necessities such as housing and to share in a meal at a local restaurant, regardless of who we love or what goes on in the privacies of our own bedrooms. I am a homeowner, by the way. I'm also in a master's program at Bethune-Cookman, so I'm very well educated. I grew up on the east side of Jacksonville, Florida, native, thirty-five years. Jacksonville can benefit greatly from not allowing discrimination against the GLBT community by increasing employment. Employment should be based on skills and performance, not sexual orientation. This in turn would increase the number of individuals paying taxes by not allowing discrimination against able-bodied GLBT individuals who are willing to work diligently. The city would also see a decrease in unemployment. Many individuals, families, and colleges graduates have chosen to relocate in order to find employers that will allow them to utilize their knowledge and their experience. This is having a negative effect on our local economy and will continue to affect our local economy unless tonight you choose to make a stand, like Obama, you choose to be the change. Thank you.
... to the President, to Pastor Matthew, to your pastor. I've never run into a pastor in the church, I've never heard anybody say keeping jobs or housing from anybody, but let me ask you this question. Would you be open to amendments in this bill, some changes that will protect churches and people that...for their rights, although it was not stopping from...it was building jobs and housing, would you be open to amendments that will protect the rights of others?
I believe that churches are not affected by this bill because I can promise you that most of my congregation is not going to First Baptist looking for a job. Neither are we looking for them to marry us.
I'm just asking you one question. Would you be open to an amendment to protect, like you want your rights, the rights of others? And not First Baptist.
I believe they're already protected.
I'm a pastor of an all-black church. We don't have no jobs to give to nobody. And so all I'm saying is, would you be open? And that's what I'm really saying because I need to ask questions because I need answers. I'm asking questions because I want to, you know, be fair, and I want to make a decision, and that's why I'm saying I appreciate your zeal as a pastor, and I'm just saying, would you be open to this bill, even as it is written, and that we can put amendments in there to also...we just can't say, you know, you believe they're already protected because some people believe that you're already protected. So would you be open to amendments in the bill, and that's just a, if you don't mind a yes or no question?
That would be amazing because I would have to see exactly what amendment you would propose.
Yeah, but you would be open to A amendment, not just, I'm saying, one that you would be open to an amendment.
Then I would say no.
Okay, thank you. That's what I need to hear. Thank you.
I'm from St. Luke's Community Church, a graduate of Nathan Bedford Forrest, alumni at University of North Florida, schoolteacher at Andrew Jackson High School, and outreach minister at St. Luke's Community Church. What I wanted to share with you tonight is that I do support this amendment that's before you. And I want to just remind you of a song that's often played on FM 88 and other Christian stations, and to me, it's just very poignant and to the point. "Jesus, Friend of Sinners, we have strayed so far away. We cut down people in your name, but the sword was never ours to swing. Jesus, Friend of Sinners, the truth becomes so hard to see. The world is on their way to you, but they're tripping over me. Always looking around but never looking up, I'm so double-minded. A plain eye stained with dirty hands and a heart divided. Oh, Jesus, Friend of Sinners, open our eyes to the world at the end of our pointing fingers. Let our hearts be led by mercy. Help us reach with open hearts and open doors. Oh, Jesus, Friend of Sinners, break our hearts for what breaks yours. Jesus, Friend of Sinners, the one who's writing in the sand, may the righteous turn away and the stones fall from their hands. Help us to remember, we are all the least of these. Let the memory of your mercy bring your people to their knees. Nobody knows what we're for, only what we're against when we judge the wounded. What if we just put down our signed crosses over the lines and look like you did?" Oh, Jesus, Friend of Sinners, break our hearts for what breaks yours. Oh, Jesus, Friend of Sinners, open our eyes to the world at the end of our pointing fingers. Let our hearts be led by mercy. Help us reach with our open hearts and open doors. Oh, Jesus, Friend of Sinners, break our hearts for what breaks yours. You love everyone, lost cause. You reach for the outcast, for the leper and the lame. You're the reason that you came. Lord, I was that lost cause. I was that outcast, but you die for sinners just like me, a grateful leopard at your feet. Because you are good. You are good, and your love endures forever. I pray that you weigh these words in your heart as you consider this amendment. Thank you."